We're good now? Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody out to our Harriman City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 27th. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance that will be offered to us by Lauren Palmer.
Please repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We always appreciate all participation in our meetings. We will move on to item 4.2, City Council Comments and Recognitions.
I have none.
Okay. I just like to call out and recognize that we had a groundbreaking for the new emergency center through Lone Peak here in our community this week. Both Councilman Orin and Councilmember Smith were able to attend with that. We're very much looking forward to having another healthcare option available for emergency care for our residents. It's much closer than previously. So I just appreciate all the efforts that have gone into by staff to help facilitate that project coming into our city. And I just wanted to call out and recognize that that's going to be a very positive thing for the benefit of our residents. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. We will move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. Audience members may bring any item to the council's attention. Comments will be limited to two minutes. State law prohibits the council from acting on items that do not appear on the agenda. Public comments for this meeting will also be conducted electronically. Any person interested in addressing this council may submit a comment by emailing recorder at herriman.org or by visiting herriman.org/agendaandminutes where there will be a link to an online public comment forum. Your statement will then be incorporated into the public record. So if there's somebody, I do have two public comment forums that have been submitted, so we'll start with those. We will start with Chris Martinson.
Thanks, Chris Martinson. I live in Harriman, voice for the voiceless. And I'm really kind of surprised that I still haven't gotten any recognition or emails from any of you that have come up every couple of weeks. So I'll just keep coming up this way. I'll bring this stuff to your attention here so that others can hear it, but also, I guess, if you have any comments, you can at least reach out to me. But the, one of the things, I mean Candace Periucci, I've been talking with her about this in the past, but of course, this is about ending abortion, but we want a proclamation here in Harriman. And this is from her, says, "In my opinion, the way to win the abortion debate is by demonstrating the science and increased viability of children in the womb and the state's vested need in protecting the life of those children." Well, I mean, we can't even proclaim it here. We can't even get any participation from our council, our city council here, saying that we want, we don't want abortion. So, I mean, that's, I mean, this is our state. We can't even say it in a city that doesn't have a Planned Parenthood or any abortion facilities here. But we still want to know that this is where we stand. There's several debates that go on all the time that are given by the pro-choice industry that we have given them, the rape and incest debate. All of those questions or all those debates, I'll be bringing to your attention here over the next, however long it takes to get you guys to talk to me, you know, in email, phone call, anyway, you have my contact. You can see some of these comment arguments on our YouTube channel, Raising Alters, that's R-A-Z-I-N-G, alters, A-L-T-A-R-S. That's a YouTube channel that you can see a lot of those comment arguments and actually some interaction with other legislators, too. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. The next comment form I have is from McLean Drake.
Hello. Hey, my name is McLean Drake, and some of the comments I wanted to make, I, hold on, let me put in my, that is the most awkward thing I've ever used in my life, but it is what it is. So I was wanting to address the concerns for the hard of hearing and particularly people with disabilities, specifically in Harriman City, to see if there was a way that we can have an open conversation with specific disabilities in our community. Specifically, obviously, I have about 70% hearing loss, and I do a lot of work with the deaf and the hard of hearing side of the community, but I also do work with the high functioning autism, sensory, and also deaf and blind individuals. We do a lot of charity for them as well. And so I was, I was hoping that there could be someone that we can talk to in regards to having a conversation, how we can be more inclusive in our community, whether that be for businesses or the city hall, especially for our conversations like the accessibility we have, because one of your representatives, Communications Department, they've been super helpful with addressing what they do have, but unfortunately, it doesn't meet the needs of someone who wears like hearing aids or along those lines, or cochlear implant. And I imagine that's just due to lack of knowledge of it. So I was hoping that that could be something addressed for disabilities, not just hard of hearing and deaf individuals, but just disabilities in general, since I know it's something very much overlooked with everything that gets debated in today's topic. So I was hoping that that would be something that we could talk about in future things and someone I could talk to future events, I guess. So, yeah, that's all I wanted to address.
Appreciate that, McLean. I'd say, if you, hold on just a second.
Wendy's going to get his info. We'll talk to him. We're both very interested in that.
All right, that's going to be easier. What's up?
Yeah, so Wendy is going to grab your information, so she'll work with you from the staff level. I would say that I feel comfortable speaking on behalf of this body, that we would love to have a conversation about that. We want to make sure that everybody has the ability and the access to our community. We appreciate participation. We want to provide as much ability to participate as possible. So please work with our staff, and let's see if we can do things to better accommodate those who need it, so.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And yeah, whenever you need to get information from me, yeah, this thing's just so weird. But yeah, I appreciate it. Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to the end of the forums that I have. If there's anybody else that would like to come up and speak, please come up and state your name.
Teddy Hodges. I just want to say thanks for the Events Department last Monday night at the Harriman Howl, even though storms rained, rescheduled, it was a blast. If you guys had time to come out, it was, it was amazing. So, good job on the Events Department, so.
Appreciate that. I would have loved to attend, but the reschedule didn't work with mine, but it's one of my favorite events, so, thank you. Okay, seeing none others, we will turn, we will close the public comment portion of our meeting. We'll move on to item six, City Council Board and Committee Reports.
The garbage district, Wausatch Front, waste and recycling. A couple of good news items is just simply that recycling is getting better for us as far as we actually got a check for recycling rather than paying $76 a ton. We actually received a check for some of our recycling, so that's really helped dramatically in our budget because our salaries and wages have gone up substantially because of just trying to compete and trying to keep drivers and necessary staff. We've had to increase our salaries, and so the recycling changes really helped compensate for those salary increases. The other issue that we have talked about, we actually issued a resolution to try and get out of being a special service district that's still at the county. The mayor and her staff have completed their review, and they've provided us a memo on Friday with some of their concerns about why, just some of the concerns they had. And the concerns are actually very easily addressed. They're, I would say, mute points at this point. They're nothing that can't be resolved. There's nothing on there that we couldn't already, like, one of the concerns was that maybe we would stop servicing like High Country or things like that. Well, we could right now if that was a choice to make. Changing the status of the district doesn't change any of the things that they were concerned about. So obviously, that's not our intent, but it changes nothing by changing that type. So, but because it's budget season at the county and they're mired down in that, it might be till the first of the year before we really see that on their agenda. And then, oh, the water board. I was able to participate in a conference that was had up in Midway two or three weeks ago. Was just always fascinating to me, some of the intricacies with water. But there is Deer Creek Reservoir is essentially where we get, the water that we buy from Jordan Valley, it all comes down through Deer Creek. That's the diversion point. Deer Creek is actually run and operated by the Provo River Users Association, which is technically a private, an NPO. They're not a government entity, because there's, most of the people on the board are government entities, but there are some irrigation districts and things like that, so they're not 100%. They're an NPO. And so they need two gates. There are gates down inside the reservoir by the dam that control, when they open and shut, they control the water that comes down the river and where the water diverts. And those gates are 80 years old, and so they have to be replaced. And so because they're underwater, the only way you could, there's two ways. You can drain the reservoir and fix them and take care of it, but it would probably be a really bad idea, especially in this environment, if we drained the reservoir. So that's not an option. So they had a company come in and they can do it in the wet, but it's expensive. It's about, just pretty close to $60 million to fix those gates. But if they fell open, we're in trouble, or if they fell shut, we'd be in trouble. So that, there's about $60 million. There's a plan that's associated with that as far as getting that funding, the different entities, they're working with the state to get that, to do the bond and things like that for that. But the other little caveat that really needs to be done, in my mind, it's short sighted if it doesn't get done, is a bypass pipe, because there's no way to bypass those gates right now. It was never incorporated into the design. And so if we can put in the bypass pipe, there would always be the ability to bypass even if the gates failed, to get water down in the river. There is not right now. So, but it's an extra 15 million, and it's beyond what they can budget for. So they've put in for ARPA money for that 15 million to, because they for sure can get the $60 million done, which is critical. But in my mind, if you're already going to spend 60 million, why wouldn't you do it just right and let it last the next 80 years with the extra 15? But we're all in competition for ARPA money. And so I guess I would ask you guys if you would be supportive. I talked to Candace about it, tried to talk to a few legislators about it to see if we can't, see if we can't get that 15 million bumped up that priority list on ARPA, because literally, if something happened to that, 1.5 million people are dependent on water getting diverted out of Deer Creek. And so it just feels like it would be important to make sure we get that extra 15 million to do it right, then to shortcut it and not put it in at this time. Would you guys be supportive of, if I can get the different bodies, even Salt Lake, Sandy, they're obviously the metropolitan area, but all of Salt Lake County is dependent on it, most of Utah County, would you guys be supportive if the rest of the legislators in those areas would be supportive of bumping that up to ARPA list?
So, just, I'm supportive of having the conversation. I think you're absolutely right in regards to water, that we need to make sure that we're protecting our water source. Without more specific details on funding and exactly what can and can't, I'd have a hard time supporting it right now, but I'm absolutely open to have the conversation. And I would totally approve putting this on a future work meeting agenda so that we can have that conversation a little bit more depth.
Let me pop you, just a one-page, white page that explains.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
I'll email that to you. I just wanted it in the public consumption so that you understand, those are the conversations I've been having with legislators on behalf of the water district, but.
You'd like to do it on behalf of the city as well.
Yeah, on behalf of every municipality that's going to be affected by that water source, I would just rather just do it right while it's, while everything's tore apart.
Yeah, I mean, doing it right versus doing it cheap is something that we try very hard not to do here in the city. So I think it generally falls in line, but once again, you're right, it is a competition for funds. We've got other projects, and what's the, you know, risk? The risk is high, but is the reward is, you know, so there's, there's a lot of things going into it, but I am open to having that conversation and be willing to seriously consider, you know, doing that from the city standpoint and saying, yes, we would support it.
I'm of the same opinion. I would love to have the conversation. I would appreciate the white paper to be able to explain that.
I'll get you that white paper.
A question, do you know, I know there's still a lot of uncertainty, but do we know if there's potentially maybe any funding that would be available that could be put towards this with, that's being included in the, close to being passed, new infrastructure legislation?
I don't, I don't, the problem is, is it's a project that has to go. It's not something that can be delayed. The gates have to get fixed. They're to the point where it's like.
They're concerned about it.
They won't shut them right now because they're afraid if they shut that they won't.
No, and I understand that on that piece, the additional 50 million, like I was saying, if, if there's an opportunity with the new infrastructure legislation that appears to be close to being approved, that, you know, as another avenue to at least explore for funding.
Yeah, and I asked the powers that be if, how come we're not just asking for direct allocation from the state? If they want to promote this growth, then they, then maybe they should put in the 15 million for the other. But again, it's because the, it's gotten so far down the line, it's got to get done, that then it's, the windows start closing on the timeframe. So, anyway, I just want you to know that those are conversations I'm having. I'm having those as a representative of Jordan Valley, not necessarily from Harriman City, but I just want you guys to be in the loop as far as that goes.
I think that's entirely appropriate for you to have as representative of the district. And I'm, like I said, I'm completely supportive of having the conversation, and I would lean towards possibly supporting that. That would probably be my initial response, because let's be honest, I've said it 100 times, public safety is, should be the number one priority of this body. Water, having access to clean water is basically the.
Life sustaining.
Life sustaining, like that is a, like, no questions asked, has to work. So that would be my leaning, but I couldn't make a decision or have any, like, make a true decision on that without more specific.
Yeah, for sure. I totally understand, but I'll get you guys the white paper, just so you can kind of understand what the project is. I mean, they're getting, they're, I think, 40%, they're engineering or something like that, so they've got, they have to get going on it, so.
Just quickly, we talked a little bit about this in our work meeting, but South Valerie Sewer Board held their meeting yesterday morning. Really, two things of note there. One, Mayor Staggs has resigned his position on the board, and so that has gone now to one of their council members who was sworn in yesterday, and now, name escapes me, but it'll come back to me. But again, we, so we sworn in a new board member yesterday for the representation from Claude Wells. It came to me finally. Claude Wells is the new representative there. And then again, as we already mentioned in our work meeting, there was a approval for a reimbursement agreement for the sewer line that's up through the Hidden Oaks area. And again, a key piece to what's needed for the elementary school opening as well, but that reimbursement agreement between the sewer district and Harriman was approved yesterday as well. So, that's all I have.
Appreciate that. We will move on to item seven, which is the consent agenda. I'll accept a motion.
I will make a motion to improve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Clint?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
I vote yes, that motion passes. And we'll move on to item 8.1, discussion and consideration of a draft ordinance to amend Harriman City Code Title 10, Chapter 29, to comply with the Utah State Code for Internal Accessory Dwelling Units. Michael?
Thank you. As the council knows, we have this and the next item, which are really housekeeping items in response to legislative updates in the 2021 Utah State Legislature. We're just going to bring up this presentation. We briefed the city council in your previous work meeting on this change to accessory dwelling units. And again, we're only talking about internal accessory dwelling units. A lot of communities are doing detached, completely separate accessory dwelling units, but the state's requirement is that we address internal accessory dwelling units, and we have chosen to limit our ordinance amendment to the state standards. This is the workflow for this project, our timeline. Again, we started looking at this in June. We've had a planning commission public hearing, they made a recommendation to the city council. We discussed it on September 22nd, and it's on for action before you tonight. Again, this is the summary of House Bill 82 that gives us the direction as far as what changes we needed to make locally. It does still allow us to prohibit short-term rental of anything less than 30 days. I understand from our Communications Department, from Tammy, that this is going to be a topic in the upcoming legislature. It looks like there's pressure on the legislature to prohibit cities from restricting short-term rentals within our communities, or at least in some locations. And this is just a simple graphic, just trying to illustrate, again, we're not talking about detached accessory dwelling units in this ordinance. We did allow internal dwelling units in agricultural zones, owner occupied only, as a conditional use. So you can see in our land use table, we're changing that from a conditional use to permitted, which again, is consistent with state code, and then we've added them into our residential zones, which is consistent also with the code. And then a summary of what these elements are, limit 1 ADU per residential parcel, only on lots that are 6,000 square feet or larger. The ADU has to be directly adjacent to the living space of the home itself. It could be above, below, behind, you know, there's a variety of configurations.
But it can't be on the opposite side of the garage.
Right, and we were trying to avoid the look of creating a duplex in a single-family neighborhood, essentially. Again, owner occupancy is a requirement. We restrict ADUs from being used as short-term rentals. We can, we can require that you don't have a second front door on the front of your home. You can have that separate entrance, it has to be on the side or the rear. And a good thing about this policy is they are already happening in our community. When you have an ordinance that allows the ability to get a permit, now we can do inspections, we can do permit reviews, we can make sure that these spaces are built to building code, and they are, they tend to be safer because they've had some level of oversight from the city. We've done a quick analysis as to what areas in the city we're talking about. As you can see, it's not everywhere in the city, because we are limiting it to the residential and agricultural zones, lots that are 6,000 square feet or larger.
So this would not be allowed in medium or high density?
By definition, possibly, because again, we've done a lot of planned developments. So as long as it's a single-family detached in an agricultural residential zone, even though it might be medium density, you still could have an ADU. We would require that one off-street parking stall for the additional ADU.
But they still have to be on 6,000 square feet.
Yes.
Right, that's true. That's true.
So let's say we're in, so just, I'm just trying to make sure I understand and that it's clear to the public. So for example, if you go back to that map that you were looking at.
Oh, you want to go back to the map?
Yeah, go on the map. Rosecrisp Village, I see there is, it looks like it's specifically knocked out, right? And that's a development where it's HOA and the single-family, there are single-family detached houses, but they only are in the footprint of the actual building. So they would not be allowed to have, and we would not be required by state code to allow them to have one of that one.
Right, right. It has to be a 6,000 square foot minimum lot for that single-family home.
Okay, all right, cool.
It is consistent with some elements in our general plan, and a good thing is, is our moderate income housing report, every year we need to report to the state in order to still be eligible for transportation funds. We have to demonstrate that we're working on these moderate income housing issues, and approving an ADU ordinance satisfies that requirement. So that will be in our annual report to the state. So again, the recommendation from the Planning Commission and staff is that it does, the proposal is consistent with our current general plan, and it is appropriate for a text amendment, and is before you for action tonight. Any further questions from the council?
No, I actually just want to tell you and the rest of the planning staff, thank you. This has been, obviously, a topic of a lot of discussion amongst every city around who is now, you know, has to incorporate those new laws into our own standards, and it's really taken a lot of work. Again, it's not, our city's not exempt from the work that's had to have been put into there, but it has been a tremendous amount, and appreciate the professional way that your staff has approached this and made recommendations on it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I agree.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2021-29, amending Title 10 of the Harriman City Code to comply with state code for internal accessory dwelling units.
I will second.
Motion and a second. Sherry?
Yes.
Clint?
Yes.
I vote yes, that motion passes. We will move straight into item 8.2, discussion and consideration of a draft ordinance to amend Harriman City Code Title 10, Chapter 29, to comply with the Utah State Code for Single Family Design Standards. Michael?
Again, this was on your work meeting agenda on September 22nd, following a Planning Commission public hearing and recommendation to adopt the draft ordinance that is before you tonight for action. Again, this is a result of the state legislation update, and we've had a few work meetings earlier this year on this project. These are the changes we're making in the existing code. Essentially, what we've done is we said, we have, we have single-family attached and detached dwelling standards. However, there will be exceptions for single-family and two-family dwelling. So if you have a three-family dwelling or four, like a townhome, you're still subject to our residential dwelling standards. And then if you're within a planned development or a master development agreement area, essentially the state code says, anytime there is a negotiation between the city and a property owner where that negotiation, a voluntary negotiation results in increased density, we do have the ability to still require design standards. So this amendment still allows for that to take place. Again, all of the changes we're making are consistent with state code. The one provision that we did talk about in the work meeting that the council seemed to be comfortable with maintaining is that we are still going to prohibit the same, the identical building elevation being adjacent to each lot. You still have to have a separation, basically, three lots away, and then you can have the same elevation.
It's adjacent to or directly across from, correct?
Right, right, yeah. So, and that was not something that was specified in state code. Planning Commission wanted to see if we could still hold on to that standard, and council seemed to feel the same way. So that's in the ordinance. We did not touch that part of the ordinance.
I don't think the developing community is going to be really terribly worried about that particular one.
So again, we're recommending approval before you tonight.
Any discussion, consideration, questions from this council?
Nope.
Okay, I'll accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2021-30, amending Title 10 of the Harriman City Code to reflect recent changes in state code for single-family design standards.
I will second.
Okay, motion second. Clint?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Would anybody like to speak to that particular vote?
I would, please. I would just like to say that, again, appreciate all of staff's work on making sure that we're compliant with state code. I'll be honest, my vote on this is a yes, only because, again, it's really statuarily mandated, or statutorily mandated. I don't necessarily agree with this legislation that was passed that takes away some of that local control and authority. I think, I think at the local level is the best place for those decisions to be made of what a community's desire of look and fill is, and I think that that's accomplished through, again, some, some well-thought-out and appropriate design standards. And I think that once we get into a space to where that's starting to be legislatively mandated from the state instead of from the local level, it inhibits the local elected officials' ability to represent, again, their constituents and what they think needs to happen at the local level. So, well, obviously, statutorily, we had to make these changes to be compliant, and that was my yes vote. Doesn't mean that I necessarily agree with it, nor do I want to continue to see these type of changes take place.
I have heard that there is some growing awareness that maybe the state went a little too far. Maybe we'll see some softening or some modifications to the standard in the upcoming legislature.
Yeah, and I've heard a little bit of that as well, and I think it's important as communities, which is really the basis for my comments, and I think it's important for communities to make it known that we feel like it was an overreach, that, again, trying to mandate that from the state level instead of leaving that at the local jurisdiction is just not appropriate, in my opinion.
I agree with it, that, I don't, I don't believe that the state should be mandating these types of things. I do, however, I liked that it was down to the 1,000 square feet on the, on the size of the single-family home. I had, I had talked about that even in our own city, trying to see if we can address that, bringing that minimum down, because I feel like that was. minimum down, because I feel like that that was very appropriate zoning type of, ordinance type of things that we can have here in our city to, to be down to the thousand square feet, in, in certain locations, I think that that was very appropriate, but, um, I agree, I don't like it when it comes down from the top, it's, it, it's better if locally you make those decisions.
Um, and, and I will, uh, well, um, just for the public record, I also, uh, disagree with the fact that the state has made this a mandate, um, and that we are being required to make this change, I, I agree with my fellow council members here that, uh, this should be a local issue and this is, I feel it's inappropriate for the state to overreach the way they have, but as being such as it has been mandated, we are complying as we are required to do, um, and so I won't belabor that point, I feel the same way the rest of the council does on that.
Thank you, council.
I, I would be happy to comply with any lessening of those restrictions as well.
Yes, that would be fantastic, so, thank you, I appreciate it. Alright, um, yeah, uh, future meetings, uh, our next meeting will be our planning commission meeting on, uh, November fourth, November tenth will be our next city council meeting, uh, we do have the Board of Canvassers meeting on the sixteenth of November, that will be at five PM in regards to the election, uh, November eighteenth will be, uh, the following planning commission meeting. We do have our fall leaf collection program going on, so if you would like more information, please reach out to the city regarding that, we do, uh, that's between now and, uh, November thirtieth, uh, November, uh, in November, we also have the Turkey Burner Challenge, I believe that's the first to twenty-six, it is a virtual, um, so if that is something you'd like to participate in, please do so. My last note before I go, uh, and I'd like to take a moment, a personal privilege on this, um, is, uh, with regards to our election, our elections have, uh, ballots have been sent out, um, I would like to, one, express my appreciation for all of the candidates that have, uh, run for, for office, um, I am not, I have, as many are aware, I did not rerun for mayor, um, I look forward to seeing, um, regardless of, uh, who is successful in the election, look forward to seeing, uh, the new leadership come in and, uh, continue, uh, the strong direction which I feel the, that the city is, is moving, um, and I appreciate the candor and way in which those, uh, um, candidates have, have taken on in this election. I would encourage all of our residents, your ballot should already be at your house, please fill them out, please take the time to participate in our, in our elections, I know I'm talking to no one in the audience right now, but if somebody happens to listen to this, I would please encourage them, uh, before that, uh, November second deadline, that is election day, if, to vote my ballot, you would need to have that submitted the day before, on election day, you can vote in person here at, uh, or at your, look, voting location, or you could drop it off, uh, your, your mail-in ballot, you could drop off on one of those days at one of the official polling boxes, um, we have one right outside of, uh, city hall, so that would be an option that's available for you.
I, I just have it, this is like five, I think.
Is our Board of Canvassers meeting?
No, I mean, the work meeting.
Oh, the November tenth work meeting will be at five thirty, that's where we've generally got, okay, so, no, thank you, that's a good call out, um, but, once again, um, please, uh, take time to vote, it's very important, and I'm sure that those candidates will appreciate, um, your support, um, other than that, I would accept, uh, we do not, just for public notice, um, we will not have a closed session, we have no items that we need to have closed session on, and so there will be no closed session today, um, we will go ahead and accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Alright, we are adjourned.
Dang, that's terrible, we have to get out of here.